Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll reconvene to open session at six oh one. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
End up on the panelists. Looks like she took her hand down. Oh, there she is. Okay, all good. Do a roll call, please.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. I report out on closed session. Today in closed session, the city council completed the city manager's performance evaluation. I'm pleased to report that the council is very appreciative of all of David's work through these difficult times. The council is in agreement that David Kelly has done a great job for the city and its residents. We look forward to David continuing to be Cloverdale's city manager and the success of our city we will have under his leadership. Conflict of interest declarations. I have one. It is H one. For H one, I was the general contractor for the remodel of the building. And although the debt is not owed by Mr. King, there is still a debt owed from the remodel, and so for that I will be recusing myself. Changes or deletions to the agenda?
I will probably have to recuse myself from the same item, Mayor Lance.
Okay. And reason for the record?
Well, the owner of the business under that item has been my neighbor for a couple of years. And although I don't have financial interest, I want to avoid any appearance of impropriety. And I want to make sure that there are no allegations of bias.
Jose, is that something that she should, or I'll leave that to you guys to make that decision? H one?
And yes, that's the council member's choice. There's also, of course, like common law, whether there's any bias, whether can you be objective or not? I think that council members just expressed some concerns about the item, given the fact that as far as the relationship in the neighbor and feels that she shouldn't vote on the item.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
Mayor, members of council, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Is there anyone in the audience who would wish to make a public comment? Please come forward, sir. If you don't mind, please state your name for the record.
Of course not. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, city staff, chief, Sean Bovee, Cloverdale. Just real quickly. On the agenda, new business, Mr. King's request for the loan. Will that have a point at which to have public comment?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And so another hand over here. Please come forward, sir. If you don't mind, please state your name for the record.
My name is Rob Kozlowski, resident of Cloverdale. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to, first of all, thank David for his quick reply today. It's a timely response just for tonight's meeting, although I was looking for a response in May, July, and September. I'm sorry I missed the July meeting. I was out of town. But I had asked at the time for a rationale for the three double-digit rate increases for water, sewer, and the drought surcharge. And I never got them. David wrote me today and said, review of the proposed rate increases will be conducted by the city council in 2023. However, I was interested in more of the 2022 rationale. Why did we have the triple-digit increases then? And they may happen again in 2023 under the same rationale. And considering the massive grants received for capital improvement projects for water and sewer, and the increase in revenue in 2022 over 2021, which the city shared with me, much smaller rate increases, if any, should have been considered this year, which I understand is too late, but certainly in 2023, I would hope. The reference 2021 study that you mentioned, David, we had gone through that in detail, the Hildebrandt study. And we definitely reviewed it and challenged a number of things as a community. And thank you, by the way, for you and the previous team in looking at those and moving some of the nice-to-do projects out. So it became more affordable in terms of capital spending. However, I believe the added capital funding from state and federal sources should have compelled a downward trend in these, you know, 10, 11, and 12% increases respectively. And certainly, this should be considered for 2023, which actually isn't that far away. A number of Cloverdallians are quite aware of the mandated, necessary, and nice-to-do capital improvement projects as well. Now, new water meters and solar PV systems were not part of the original project in that reference document that Hildebrandt did back in 2021. The other thing is communication. And we talked about this for a few times, David. You wrote to me that regular updates are provided in the weekly newsletter. I would argue they're not. Regular updates on water, sewer, and drought surcharge spending have not been provided in that newsletter. We'd like to know which projects have started, whether it's a new well, a reservoir replacement, miles of sewer line added or replaced, and more. And how far along these capital improvement projects have moved, how much has been spent and is left to be spent. Furthermore, there's been talk, as I said, of installing smart water meters for millions of dollars. This was not part of the 2120 study, as you can see in the document you forwarded, Schedule W two dash one, for example. This added effort would force rates to become even higher and not solve the underlying infrastructure problems outlined in the 2021 study. These problems that were ignored for the past decade. Transparent communication are essential for the public to understand and what is and what is not going on in terms of water, sewer, and the drought surcharge. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wants to make a public comment tonight? Any hands on the Zoom? Mayor Lance, I don't believe any hands are raised. That's correct. No hands are raised at this time. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, we have such a complex agenda. Is there an extra paper copy? That way I don't have to splash back and forth. Oh, great, thank you.
So welcome. Okay, sorry. D. Communications. Any communications, written communications, anything?
No specific communications, noting that we did receive an email from Mr. Kozlowski, which he just spoke under public comments, too.
And I think that's something that we will be discussing for future agenda items later on, just since we can't do it now.
Mayor, just for reference, the discussion in the DWR grant has been a standing item on the Public Works Subcommittee. The Subcommittee is scheduled monthly. We've advanced the schedule. And there will be further updates as a standing item at the Public Works Subcommittee level.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, student liaison report.
Good evening, everyone. For my report, I have that our varsity volleyball players have made it to playoffs but unfortunately lost their first playoff game. Our football team has also lost two games against Kelseyville on October 14th and Middletown on October 21st. Cross Country had a meet in Willets on the 19th. And Lowen Glasson had the best time of 18 minutes and 55 seconds for Cloverdale. Our soccer season starts this Tuesday and other events. Our ASB is having a Halloween rally and a costume contest on October 31st. And Halloween Spirit Week starts on October 31st. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, moving into consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Do you have any items that we would wish to pull? Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
I would like to pull F six.
F six. Okay, anyone else?
I can vote on the consent calendar as is, except for F six.
It sounded like for F six, right? Does anyone else have anything they would like to pull? So you're, so, okay, so that would be a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance? Okay, F six. Councilmember Cruz, please go ahead.
I voted against this on the general session, and I hold my stand.
Okay, so let me tell what the item is. The item is the adoption of ordinance amending Title IX of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9.34, the human habitation of vehicles and campers, and add Chapter 9.35, protection of critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas. Do we have any other discussion that we would like to have at the council level? I will open it up to public comment at this point. Does anyone in the audience have any comment on this item? Seeing none? Any hands on the attendees list? I see none. I'll bring it back to the council and we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move the item.
Thank you. Totally skipped right over it.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
And before we get to the vote, if I could just read the, there's an ordinance standard resolution. I'll be happy to read both recommended actions since it was opened. Hold second reading and adopt by title only entitled An Ordinance of the City of Cloverdale, Amending Title IX of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9.34, Human Habitation of Vehicles and Campers, and add Chapter 9.35, Protection of Critical Infrastructure and Wildfire Risk Areas. And then the second item under that same motion is adopted resolution entitled a resolution of the city council of the city of Cloverdale identifying critical infrastructure for the purpose of implementing Chapter 9.35, Protection of Critical Infrastructure and Wildfire Risk Areas of the Cloverdale Municipal Code. Sorry for the interruption.
Nope, it's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to reflect that on the record that the, both the ordinance and resolution were approved by a vote of four to one.
Moving forward. It's a G one financing plan for the city's participation in the PG&E turnkey program. David?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're going to provide a presentation to you regarding the financing plan for participation in the PG&E turnkey program. The, this is a program that staff has been working on now for a number of years in collaboration with PG&E and their team. And Mike, if it can, go ahead and coordinate bringing on the three members in the audience of Zoom, which includes David Carter, Robert Hudson, and Brooklyn. Tonight is a public hearing to consider, really, two actions. First of which is a resolution that would approve the results of the investment grade audit that was performed by the PG&E team in Centrica. This is something that council has reviewed the results of in various presentations and is outlined in the agenda report. In addition to the IGA, as we're going to call it in short, is the work order, which would provide us the mechanism to move forward with PG&E to basically order all the infrastructure and equipment that would be necessary to implement the work that's proposed and as recommended under the IGA. The second action tonight is a resolution considering approval of an equipment lease purchase agreement. Really, this is your financing plan with, and I'll say this, Bonk of America. It's not a misspelling in the agenda report, including related documents and actions, which include the professional service agreement with three of the entities that we worked with very closely on bringing this item forward tonight. That includes a professional service agreement with Bill Fowle, or WJ Fowle Company. Bill's in the audience, and he's going to walk you through a presentation. Bill is, serves as our municipal advisor and really is, looks at this transaction of, you know, through an independent lens and provides advice as to the feasibility of this transaction from a financial perspective. And Bill will, Bill will walk us through a fairly detailed presentation. In addition, joining us tonight is Dave Fama. Dave Fama is with, I think he stepped out of the room. But Dave is with Jones Hall. Jones Hall has served as our bond counsel on another, on previous redevelopment, bond refinancings and transactions, and is very familiar with the city. Last but not least is our placement agent with the firm of Oppenheimer and Company. We're joined by two representatives from Oppenheimer, and that includes both Rick Brandis. I've personally known Rick for a number of years and worked with him on previous redevelopment transactions, and a member of his team, David Shaw. And both of them are going to speak to, or at least be here to address any questions you may have about the actual mechanism of the, and components of the equipment lease purchase agreement that they worked on with Bonk of America. So with that said, I'd go ahead and invite the team up, Bill, if you want to join us at the desk. Council, we're going to, we're going to review this item a little bit. Going to be redundant in terms of the overview of the investment grade audit and what we're recommending tonight in terms of a financing measure to proceed with purchasing this equipment to implement these energy-saving projects. So Bill, turn it over to you.
Great, all right. Thank you very much. My white side, see the green lights on my mic's on. Good. Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here tonight and address the city council. I've had the privilege of working with the city as your municipal advisor on some prior successor agency, thank you, refinancing, one we did in 2015. And then we refinanced that again in 2020 and got some great rates because we hit the market perfectly. Rates, of course, are higher today, but the good news is that the rate on this financing is still very, very favorable, in my opinion. In fact, slightly under 4%, which I think is an amazing quote from Bank of America, given, as we all know, our interest rates have been really spiking of late as the Federal Reserve tries to tamp down inflation by raising interest rates. So anyway, let me go through the presentation. We can have the next slide then, if you would. Okay, so this is basically the table of contents. We're going to talk about the financing team, discuss the scope of the project, go through the financing plan, talk a little bit about the estimated savings, review the financing documents, I'll review the cost of issuance, and the next steps to get us to closing. We're hoping to close on or about November 17th. So once we get the approvals, your standardized documents, everything goes fairly quickly thereafter. So I can have the next slide, please. Okay, that's great. Okay, so the financing team, again, I'll just go over the role. My role is a municipal advisor. So I'm a registered municipal advisor with Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board and also the Securities Exchange Commission. So I have a fiduciary relationship and responsibility to the city. So as municipal advisor, I will evaluate, and I've done that, the cost effectiveness of the financing. Is this going to work? You know, is it going to work for you? It will, by the way. I'll get into that. So I go through and kind of coordinate the financing team and kind of take a team leadership role on our financing team. They don't work for me, but I kind of oversee everybody's work and coordinate the work to the finished product and work directly with the staff. So I'll be like a primary contact with the staff, working through any issues. Then Oberheimer is our placement agent. We have Dan Shaw and Rick Brandis. They will, they've gone out and solicited the marketplace from different lenders to get rates to show what the best rate that we could get in best terms. And their role as placement agent, actually, they are actually bond underwriters. But when we do a financing with the loan, their role is termed that of placement agent. And so that's, you know, that's just a little explanation. And that means they place the loan or assist with placing a loan with a financial institution, a commercial bank that specializes in municipal finance. So that's their role. And I know that Jones Hall has worked for them for many years, and they're highly regarded. Jones Hall is the bond counsel. They've been your long-term bond counsel. They'll render the necessary opinions, go through all the documents, make sure that they are where they should be in terms of terms. So that's what their role is. And then Pacific Gas Electric, they're the general contractor. It's my understanding that Centrica is the subcontractor to them in terms of doing the actual construction part of the project. But I don't really supervise them. We're doing the financing part. They're doing the construction part. But we kind of need each other, right? We don't have a financing, this is a project finance, right? And so they, you know, we work together in that sense. We complement the different things we bring to the table. Okay, go to the next slide then. With this is the scope of the project, and I believe that the council has seen this before. But basically, the total project cost is $7,884,824. And that will be, anyway, so that's, most of that is for the water meters. The new water meters is four million of that. And then the solar improvements benefiting the wastewater treatment plant is the other $3 million. And then various miscellaneous improvements to different city facilities, air conditioning and things of this nature that all add up. And the payback, the simple payback, we're estimating what the term of our financing will be, 14.6 years. But actually, it's going to be shorter than that when we use this drought grant the city has gotten. It will be, it will prepay that by about almost $1,648,000. And once that's applied, that will shorten up the maturity, you know, the payback even more so. So it's great to have that money coming in. We estimate that will be coming in within three years. The project will take about one year to complete. And so it should come in, we're estimating, well within two years from project completion date. And as soon as that money's come in, the city can use that to pay down the loan, which will reduce your debt service and also accelerate the payoff of that debt. So it's a great, it's a great thing. It's like having a house, you know, you have your mortgage, and all of a sudden, rich uncle leaves you a bunch of money, right? And you can, you know, pay off a third of your mortgage overnight. So it's really a great opportunity for the city. Okay, that's about, let's see, on that, then the bottom part lists the energy savings. I think Centrica's gone through that with you. But there's a lot of environmental benefits as well with the, this green electricity generation and so forth, and water conservation. So there's a lot of things above and beyond just the pure dollar savings that are beneficial. Okay, we'll go to the next slide, please. So this is the heart and soul of the financing plan. It's an equipment lease purchase financing. And it basically is a general fund obligation. But over 92% of the debt service is going to become from net water revenues and net wastewater revenues. And those, and I'll get into this, but those, we've taken a deep dive into looking at the debt service coverage, looking at your, you know, projecting out your net water and wastewater revenues, and you're in great shape, okay? Very, very strong. I'll get to that. So anyway, so that's why we've taken a deep dive into that. The water portion will pay about 72% of the debt. And the wastewater enterprise, about 20% of the debt. And the general fund, just under 8%, okay? So it's really, really strong. And the coverage on the water we're projecting out, it's about 3.71x. So that means that you have $3.71. So that means that you have $3.71 of net revenue for every dollar of debt you have, and that's very, very strong. Usually in our business, if you have 140 to 160 net revenue debt service coverage, that would qualify you probably for close to an A rating or municipal bond insurance. So you're way above that. I mean, you have ample net revenues. You don't ever need to worry about not having enough water and wastewater net revenue to cover that share of the debt service. And that's why we took a deep dive into that, because 92% of the debt service is paid by your net water and wastewater revenues. And what I'm telling you tonight is it's very, very strong. And the wastewater revenues, net revenues are very strong, too. They go from about 2.96 to 1 projecting out in '23, out to 6.11. So you're really in great shape. And the fact that you approved these water and wastewater rates in 2021 was great, although I think your coverage would actually be pretty strong even if you hadn't done that, okay? But I just wanted to give you that assurance. So I'm going to go back up to where, farther in the slide. What we're doing, a private placement financing as opposed to a public offering. And there's a reason why we're seeing more and more of that today in our business, is because there's low, basically, the rates for private placement haven't gone up nearly as quick as the public offering rates. But there's a lot of excellent things about a private placement. One is lower cost of issuance. The legal costs primarily are not as much. And this other one is less staff time. It doesn't take as much staff time. So that's important. And then the documents tend to be more streamlined. There's not as many documents. You don't have an official statement or prospectus like you do with a public offering. So it's simplified, it's simpler. And then the other thing that's really, really cool is that you can lock your interest rate in advance of closing. And that is a wonderful thing, because in a rising interest rate market, you're out there, you say, gee, you know, it's going to take us 60 days to put this together, and we don't really know what our rate's going to be, okay? But the beauty of this is, like tonight, you already know what your rate's going to be, what they've operated a form rate through closing. So that takes away a lot of the anxiety about a rising interest rate risk. How much is it going to cost? We don't know what the rate's going to be. We know what the rate's going to be. So this is a wonderful benefit of private placement financing, and I've done probably 100 of these in my career. And it's really an excellent alternative to public offering debt, especially if the term is 15 years or less. If you have to go out for a longer term, like 30 years, then you need to sell municipal bonds, right? But these equipment leases are, you know, are much lower in term, and so it works out so much better. Then the other thing that the city is going to do to reduce the amount of the financing debt is they have an ARPA grant fund. And right now, the staff said that this council, we're going to earmark $980,000 of that grant to pay down the financing amount. So that's good. So less debt means lower debt service, right? So it's a good thing. But in addition to the $980,000, you're going to have this additional grant that the city is going to receive. Now, that grant is a reimbursable grant, so the city has to spend the money first before they can get reimbursed from the Department of Water Resources. But to fully anticipate that is going to happen. Here, we can go to the next slide. So I kind of got ahead of myself a little bit here, but I talked about the debt service coverage calculation, and we took a deep dive into that. I mean, we went, we worked with the city rate, water rate consultant and wastewater consultant Mark Hildebrand in terms of our projections, because we knew that 92% of the debt service is going to be paid by the water and wastewater systems. So that's really, we're really focused looking at that. And the bottom line is that your debt service coverage for both water and wastewater, taking into account the annual debt service on this lease purchase financing, is very, very strong. You would probably have great debt service coverage even if without the rate increase you'd done, okay? So it just, that reflects well on the city council that you've been able to make those decisions that often are sometimes hard to raise rates on ratepayers, but it's better in the long term for the community and for the ratepayers. Now, looking a little bit more at the actual deal point, the actual interest rate that will be charged on the equipment financing is just under 4%. Originally, we were thinking 4%, but Dan and Rick were able to actually get a little bit better rate. Every little bit helps, right? Just under 4%. And that's an excellent rate in today's market. Many financiers we're seeing out there would be in excess of 4%. So when I give you some comfort, that's really an excellent rate, and in my opinion, you should take that and approve that tonight. Then the other thing is that there is a prepayment option. I want to talk about that. The one prepayment that was special negotiated was that the city has the ability to prepay up to $2 million of this loan with no prepayment premium. So primarily, that would consist of this drought, the Department of Water Resources drought grant, okay, in the amount of $1,648,000. That will be used to pay down that. But in addition, if the city has additional money that they want to, you know, put into additional pay down of this debt, they can do that up to $2 million. So that decision does not have to be made now. That can be a point of discussion with the staff and the city council as you do your annual budgeting. But, you know, if you can afford it and do it, I recommend you do it, right? It's better to pay off debt quicker than later if you have the ability to do that, as long as that doesn't hamstring you from doing other things that need to be done in the city. So that's really a balancing act that the city council has to do. And of course, that what you have to do all the time, so you're used to have to make those kind of decisions on how you allocate resources. Then the other thing I'll mention about is that the prepayment premium, for example, if you had some extra money that you wanted to prepay at any time, say somebody walked in and said, hey, I want to prepay the whole thing, I'm going to leave you a my estate. Well, then you pay a 102% prepayment premium. But the thing about that is so great, is the flexibility. A typical public offering, you cannot prepay the bonds for 10 years. But here, they're saying that you can prepay it on any interest payment day. So that, I mean, you don't really intend on doing that, but it's nice to have that flexibility. I think that's really an excellent provision that Dan, working with Bank of America, and Rick was able to negotiate with the bank on your behalf. Now, the one item is that the prepayment must occur within three years from closing. So we estimate we're going to close on November 17th of this year, and so three years out would be, what, November 17th, 2025? And I think staff would tell you that, you know, they're very confident that they'll be reimbursed by the state well within that timeframe, because the project's going to be completed for Centrica in one year. So they estimate, assuming council approves everything tonight, that the project will be fully operational within one year. So say roughly October 27, '23. So anyway, so that's good. And all the project money will be expended. I'm not sure if the grant, if, you know, they get reimbursed in parts, or if they have to spend the whole thing to get reimbursed. But I think that's very doable, and I don't think there's any concern on my part that the city will not be reimbursed within three years. I don't think, I don't think that should concern or worry you. But the good part is that Bank of America has said that if for some reason, worst-case situation, you got a situation where you hadn't quite got reimbursed, right, that they would say, they would say, they won't put it in writing, but they said, talk to us and we'll work with you. So they want to work with the city, they want your business, you know, this is their bread and butter business, and so they, you know, but I don't think that's going to be a concern. I think you're going to be just fine. Okay, so the next page will go to the estimated savings. And I think that this was previewed to the finance committee on October 3rd, so there's probably nothing new here. But basically, Dan put this together, and it just puts out on the far right column, you know, the net saving, eight seven, excuse me, net savings that takes into account all the energy savings benefit from the project. And so as you see, they kind of go down over time as more of the debt is paid off. The important thing to remember about this, at the bottom of the table, is that once that $1,648,000 of grants is used to pay down the debt, your debt service will go down over $65,000 a year and will save you total debt over the life of financing $2.4 million. So that is really great. And we don't have this savings plan, but I've looked at it, and I don't think the amount of debt that the general fund will have to pay is any kind of concern. I mean, another table, like, you know, the general fund will probably pay about net $31,000 after taking into account all the energy savings on city facilities. So I think that's a very manageable number, you know, for the city. And so in any event, so this is kind of what we went through. Dan, do you want to mention anything about this table or anything? I mean, I'm going to put you on the spot, Dan did all the work, he's great. So is there anything that you wanted to highlight on that, that maybe I didn't point out as much as I should?
Yeah, you covered it well. The one thing I'd like to add is the debt service for this loan wouldn't begin until 2024. That gives a year for these projects to be built, so the city isn't paying anything out of pocket before the projects are built and providing energy savings.
Right, that's a very good point. So in other words, you won't have to come out of pocket for the debt service until all the benefit, financial benefit the city is going to receive from this project you're receiving, okay? And that's typically what we do in our business. If we were financing a project that is going to create revenue, we usually, you know, try to structure the deal so that debt service doesn't start until the additional revenue is coming in from the facility. So that's a very good thing that the bank is doing. And so probably the first debt service payment wouldn't even be due till May of '24, right?
Correct.
So anyway, we thought I'd mention that to you, and I thought that was really a good deal point that Dan and Rick were able to negotiate with Bank of America on your behalf. I was kind of shocked myself. I don't normally see that type of thing. So that was, it was a good shock, it was a good shock. Okay, so then, we'll just go to the next slide, the overview of the financing documents. There's a resolution that's been presented to the city council tonight, so assuming you want to move forward in the financing, then you need to approve that. And then also, there'd be a complimentary resolution approving PG&E investment grade audit into sustainable solutions, turnkey implementation, work order for the project. So we approved those two resolutions. And then when you approve the resolution for the equipment lease purchase agreement, it mentions our firms in that resolution. So if, you know, if when you approve that resolution, assuming tonight, then we'll be officially retained by the city council to implement this financing plan. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, so here's the cost of issuance. And the point, first point I want to make is that all the cost of issuance is only payable if we close. And it's always payable out of the financing proceeds. So if for any reason, we didn't close, okay, or the city council two weeks ago says, oh, we don't want to do this, okay? You don't owe us a nickel, okay? You have no financial downside risk, okay? So I just wanted, and that's how we work with all of our municipal clients. I always work contingent. I don't work, I don't charge any hourly fees. We work on a transaction basis. It's kind of like being a realtor in a way, you know, we only can pay it if we close. And the client likes that because we don't want to have to charge our cities for not getting something done they wanted to do. And so this is typically how we work in our industry, and I wanted to assure you that there's no financial downside, you know, for the city if we were not to close for any reason. But we think we will. We think it's a great deal, and I certainly recommend that you do it. Okay, so in any event, all of our agreements will list these fees. It's just not in here, they're, you know, so you'll have those, it's all specified and all very, you know, fully transparent. Okay, so then, so then the next steps after, the next slide then would be, okay, the next step for completing the financing after the resolution is adopted is that we'll fine-tune our financing numbers, you know, maybe the cost of issuance won't be quite as much. I think it's, they're a little high, so we'll, you know, fine-tune everything down to the penny. So Dan will do that, and he does a great job doing that. And then we'll finalize the equipment lease purchase, the final terms and numbers. So basically, the bond counsel will insert into the financing documents all the final numbers. It will basically be this deal that we, you know, presented to you tonight. And so that takes a little bit of time. But the guys, but we are confident that we can close by November 17th of this year, assuming, you know, we get all the approvals tonight. We're very confident about this. And so we're using Bank of America's kind of standard equipment lease documents that then were taken by the bond counsel, Jones Hall, and they were massaged and kind of customized for the city. So they're very comfortable with the core documents we have. They're, you know, they're not going to have any problems, you know, we review them all, make sure there's nothing onerous in there in terms of the city. And so it's going to go, it's going to go smoothly. This is apparently, Dan and Rick tell me that Bank of America is basically the 800-pound gorilla in the whole energy, renewable energy financing in California. You know, the other people that compete in this market don't come close to their rates. And so this is really their niche that they are making for themselves. So anyway, so that really concludes my presentation. We're here to answer any questions the city council has or from staff. But, you know, but I want to give you assurance that I think there's ample revenue to pay this debt service, and it's only going to get better in time because you're going to be taking additional grant funds and paying down the debt, you know? So it's going to, it's going to get better, you know, as time goes on.
Thank you, sir. We'll bring her back to the dais. Who wants to start?
Mayor, members of council, just real quickly, I wanted to mention that we do have the team from PG&E on Zoom, Brooklyn, David Carter and Rob Hudson. So if there's any questions about the investment grade audit, the results in terms of the energy savings or the specifics around the energy side of the discussion tonight, that the PG&E Centrica team is here to answer any questions. But in the audience tonight is our core financing team, so we have both present in case you have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, I would like to know how is it that this bank has become the bank for all these energy projects?
Mayor, if I can, address Councilmember Cruz's question, and I might lean on David Shaw for some assistance. Just in terms of the background, we did a fairly in-depth evaluation of entities that would finance this transaction. Correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, was it seven entities?
Correct, yep.
That were requested to, in essence, provide quotes, if you will, in terms of what they would price this financing at. And those were all summarized in a memorandum that was provided to the Public Works Subcommittee. And I think it was just clear that Bank of America was the clear favorite in terms of just the best or least cost, I guess, maybe to the city. So I don't know, if you, anything else you want to touch on on that?
You covered it well. Yep, we went to seven banks, and Bank of America had the best pricing. What's also great is we locked, we got this term sheet about maybe 10, 12 days ago, and rates have come up significantly since then, and our rate is held. So we're at a 3.94. It would be well above 4% right now, so we're in a good spot.
Yeah, I just want to assure council that we really did our due diligence to look at, you know, different avenues for financing this transaction, and it, you know, wasn't by default that we selected Bank of America. It really was, you know, I can say it's kind of based on all those entities looking at the same term sheet and pricing accordingly. And I think it appears that in this particular case, they have the most experience working with municipalities on these types of equipment leases, and that also bodes well for partnering with them on a financing plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, well, I think just one question, but you had mentioned with your presentation that there'd be a prepayment penalty if we went past that three-year period? And you kind of, I didn't understand what that dollar amount was for a prepayment penalty.
If you prepaid on any interest payment date other than the grant funds, it would be like 102%. And that would be a prepayment on any payment like 102%, and that would be a prepayment on any payment date, which is basically twice a year.
Yeah, so what was the percentage again?
It was...
Yeah, 2% of the outstanding loan amount at that time. And that's what we call the optional prepayment, it's the standard prepayment. The grant proceeds prepayment is what we're calling a special prepayment, and that's a different beast. That's where it's a cap of $2 million, but it's no penalty.
No penalty on that at all?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and then, let me see, the rate's locked for 15 years, we should have it paid off by then. And there was something in the presentation that you did at the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee pertaining to a guarantee of performance? Could you just explain that again? That wasn't explained.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, if I can, I think for the benefit of the council, what your, the question at the subcommittee was in regard to was performance of the photovoltaic system and whether the savings that, well, the generation, electrical generation from the PV would meet the, and generate the savings that was forecast in this analysis. And there is a guarantee, it's really built into the purchase where we get to look at that over a one-year period, but if council does feel like it's beneficial, we can, in essence, purchase insurance that would, if we don't meet that savings, provide a guarantee. And I would probably want to ask Brooklyn or David Carter to speak more about that, and, because there's really kind of some different options. But I think, Vice Mayor, did I capture what I think your question was about that?
You did, thank you.
So I don't know, Brooklyn, if you're, if you can hear me on this, if you want to address the issue in more depth, please do so.
Brooklyn, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, I got you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the question is, the question is, how you do that, how you create the guarantees, a performance guarantee for the solar? And generally, two ways of looking at it. First, what is built into the project's costs, or I guess a mechanism built into the project is what's called performance assurance. And what that means is that the one-year mark after the project has been installed, that a, basically, an M&amp;V, measurement verification report is generated by our team, by Centrica and PG&E. And that is taking a snapshot of the meters that were affected by the solar prior to installation, and then post-installation. And we'll show you what the performance of that is. And really, the key is where we see most customers want a performance guarantee is that measurement verification side. And during the first year, the workmanship is under warranty by Centrica as a workmanship guarantee, meaning that if any of the equipment is faulty or fails, is replaced and fixed by Centrica and our team. So in that sense, you know, generally in electrical systems, it's the first year where there's, if there's any faulty electrical equipment or hardware, we identify that in the first year, so that's fixed. You will have a performance platform, so a monitoring software that you're able to watch and read through. And ultimately, you have the ability to buy a performance guarantee. Generally, our recommendation is that it's not worth it, that you have, in the first year with us watching it, that it's not necessary to have it, it is an option that you have.
And then as far as the equipment you need to fulfill the replacement of everything, you have no problem getting that, those parts?
Not at all, yeah.
No.
Yeah, and those are all under warranty, so your inverters are warranted for 10 years, and the solar panels are warranted for 20 years. Okay, I was just fact-checking that with Rob, our engineering manager, you're correct, 25 years.
Brooklyn. So Brooklyn, the first question I have for you is also regarding the solar panels, the degradation over the 25 years. What is the loss, percentage loss, or the minimum that you guys would maintain over that 25 before they would have to be replaced?
What is...
Like, you know, over 10 years, it'll have 88% efficiency after 10 years. Do we have something like that that guarantees that they'll still be efficient in 20 years other than this insurance?
Yeah, so that is built into the manufacturer warranty, that the product will, so what you can't predict and what the manufacturer's not going to warranty is acts of nature, right? If there's a heavy fire year, a lot of smoke during the summer that blocks sunlight, and production from the solar equipment is going to be less, they're not going to warranty that. But the actual production of the equipment itself, that is warranted. So if they degrade faster than they have as part of the warranty, then absolutely it'd be replaced.
Thank you. My next question, I think, is probably going to be better for David to answer. With our capital improvement projects, how does this fit in, and what do we have left in that projects that would, they talked about the numbers saying that we are in good shape and things like that. I know there's tens of millions of dollars more of projects that we have planned, and why that makes a difference, if you could explain it to us.
Sure, absolutely, Mayor. So the key capital improvement project that is included in this turnkey program is the water meter project. And one of the key differences between how the CIP identified we were going to deliver that project, and how this envisions, and how we plan to carry it out with the turnkey program, is where there's a key difference. And really, what the CIP and the water rate study envisioned that we would be doing is doing this over a long period of time, really about 10 years, where we're doing it on an incremental basis. This project, what the turnkey program enables us to do is to deliver this project, as the title states, in a turnkey fashion. So our goal is to be able to replace all the meters that need to be replaced, basically nearly 100% of them throughout the city. And so we're really, I think, as we saw that presentation in July from our rate consultant, Mark Killebrand, we are going to deliver a key CIP project in a one-year timeframe versus a 10-year timeframe, as was originally envisioned. And those latter years weren't, were not covered in the CIP, because it really, it was, or covered in the rate study, because it only covered a five-year period of time. So we're, that's the key difference, is we're able to deliver a project much quicker under this program, because in part, we're deviating from the pay-go to a debt finance component on the meter project itself with, and that's where we built in this mechanism to help alleviate some of that debt service by paying back the grant proceeds that we received. Other lesser CIPs that are included in this project are things that we know we're going to need to do, including replacement of most of all of our HVAC systems on our public facilities. It's just a matter of time before, you know, most of our existing HVACs are really at the end of life, and they're continuing to work because we dedicate so much maintenance time to them. But that would be the other key capital improvement project that we're being able to deliver with this, with the turnkey program.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, I have a question related to your first inquiry to the organization, is like, all right, so what if there's an upgrade on the solar panels? Would that also apply to the arrangement that we would have?
Can you explain what you mean by upgrade, Councilmember Cruz?
Well, you know, what I mean is if there's a better quality of panel made in the 25 years, is that going to be implemented with us, or do we have to wait for the 25 years before any new equipment or any improvements or upgrades are made? And I think maybe Brooklyn would have the answer to that.
Mayor, I'm happy to maybe just jump in, and then Brooklyn dovetail on my initial comment. I think, it's a very good question, and it's something that, you know, with every project we evaluate, is there going to be a better, a better technology, a better improvement that comes forward after we, you know, made a decision to move forward with maybe a certain purchasing decision, whether it be a vehicle or, you know, some other capital improvement?
City manager, I wonder if the timeframe for improved solar panels might be more like 25 months than 25 years? So that's the reality that we're probably dealing with. I think that, and maybe, and Marta, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe the question is, you know, what happens when equipment fails, or something becomes so obsolete that it's obvious that it needs to be replaced? How will that affect the financing and our decision tonight?
Well, that would be an additional aspect to my question, but I really want to know about, you know, upgrades, technology advancement, you know, within this period?
Right.
And, you know, does it impact the whole project, or will it impact parts of the project? And how would that be addressed?
Yeah, I think if, for instance, we, there was a significant increase in the efficiency of PV, we would probably have to go back and look at, and do a similar analysis as we've done for this, to determine if we were to upgrade to these new, more efficient panels, would it generate the savings or additional savings to help offset the additional capital cost of purchasing the new panels? But I don't know, Brooklyn, if there's, you know, I don't think there's a, kind of a, you know, we see with maybe our cell phones, a system where if there are upgrades, you can kind of turn in what you got and get new ones as part of this program, though that could be something, you know, if there were some changes in technology, that we could sell our existing panels, buy new ones. Again, we'll look at kind of the business case for that transaction on a case-by-case basis at that time, I think.
Would that be our obligation, David, to research the new technology, or would that be something that the company would provide us?
I, you know, I think it's always our obligation to be looking to, for opportunities to, you know, save ratepayer money or improve efficiency. And sometimes those opportunities are presented to us by other parties. I don't know, Brooklyn, if you, if you're PG&E, because you've done these turnkey projects over enough time now, have you, I know, Robert, have you seen where there's been some technological advances? And if so, how have you addressed that? I think that would get to Councilmember Cruz's question.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in if I could. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I don't know why I can't see myself, but, that's fine. Let me kind of step back just a little bit, and the solar system as sized at the wastewater treatment plant is really maximized for, basically, the transformer that's there, the PG&E capability that exists right now. So new solar, while they're coming out with new designs constantly, basically, the new stuff that's coming out is smaller panel sizes for higher efficiency. So it's still going to run in the same limitation of, well, they can make the field smaller. Potentially, you could add more, but we're kind of maxed out for the infrastructure that currently exists. So that's kind of why we're sized where we are. So the new technology won't really help, it could decrease the size of the field over time, but it's not going to be really advantageous to anybody. Does that, can I answer your question?
Yes and no, because I really would like to hear that there will be, kind of a, how often, okay, let me ask something. How often would you be checking on the efficiency of the project?
That's pretty constant, because there's a set degradation in there, and Bill's financial analysis, he showed there was a section on there with the degradation of the solar over time. So there's a set curve that it follows for degradation. So that is already figured into the financials for the project. So what we'll be watching, that to make sure it's following that curve, we don't have any failures, we're not looking at any point to replace pieces that are doing what it's supposed to, we're only looking to replace pieces that fail.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Can I, if I could just add something, actually, Rob, if you could speak to this, can you, kind of along the same lines of the question that was being asked by City Councilmember Cruz, is NEM 2.0 to 3.0, and one of the costs to waiting? So if you waited, let's say, another year, because you're going to have a newer technology, and you're going to gain an efficiency because that technology is newer, one year down the line or two years down the line, there are negative ramifications to doing that. One of them is net energy metering transition from 2.0 to 3.0, which is currently in the works. Can you, can you get into that a little bit, Rob?
A little bit. The problem with the new NEM 3.0 that's been discussed with the CPUC is that the value of the solar that's not being used on-site would be much less. So the way the system works as designed is it feeds the wastewater treatment plant, but it's also feeding some additional meters. And the value of that would drop off tremendously after this NEM 3.0 is passed. So that's definitely something, we want to get this paperwork and everything moving on it before NEM 3.0 is passed.
My point in bringing that up was simply to say that, you know, if you look at it, the big picture, you know, over time, the technology does improve, there's no doubting that. But that doesn't mean that the environment of the market is going to remain static, or it's going to improve with it. In fact, it's getting tighter and, I guess, more restrictive. So there is a value to selecting the technology that is best now, and taking advantage of the economics that the system provides.
Thank you. Any questions from the city council? Jose, do I need to document time for the public hearing, or can I just open it to public?
Officially.
Okay, I'll officially open it to the public at 7:05. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Please come forward.
I'll ask again. I wasn't sure if, David, you answered Todd's question about if we have the 1.6 million and the 1.000 going to fund what is his new project compared to what we saw in the 2021 document we looked at? What does this do for the sewer capital improvement projects and the water capital improvement projects? Because there's supposed to be a new well, a well replacement number seven, a well rehabilitation number eight, Cheryk... number eight, Cherokee reservoir rehab, water main replacement, that's just the water projects. You called those incremental. You can't, you know, fix a reservoir or do a new well and call it incremental. It's a project. So we, we seem to be engaging in other projects as a ratepayer, right? We went the max to pay for what seems water meter upgrades, if I got that right. Sorry, and I'm sorry I missed some of these other meetings. And a PV system that'll be used for not just the water treatment plant, but others. So are the water rates, the sewer rates and the drought surcharge being used to fund this? And then I listened to Bill, who had a very good presentation, thank you, Bill, and he says we probably didn't need the water rate and the sewer rate increases, if I understand it, to fund this, this leasing arrangement. So my concern is the ratepayers of, are paying the incremental amounts, the double-digit increases on those three categories. And it doesn't seem like we're communicating what is the progress on the capital improvement projects that the ratepayers are supposed to pay. It seems like we're paying now for water meters that do we really need because they're smart, when we should be looking at rehabilitating sewer and water lines. Thank you very much.
I, I want to say, just in terms of incremental, I was speaking specifically to the water meter project and delivery, not, not the other projects. I, I think, you know, discussion around the other projects was, was a conversation as part of a presentation we had at, at your July 27th meeting where we really did a deep evaluation of the projects that were included in your CIP and proposed to be funded with your, your rates. And when, when we, we did that analysis, we wanted to make sure that the proposed program we're bringing tonight comports with that analysis. And that's what we asked our financial municipal advisor, Bill Fowle, to do was consult specifically with Robert Hildebrand and, and make sure that, that it, it does comport and that we are, ensuring that we're, we're still following with the recommendations that's set forth in the water and wastewater plan, but also coming forward with a financing plan that it, that is, makes economic sense. So trying to achieve, achieve both. So I, I wasn't prepared tonight to, to go into a deep discussion on the status of CIP projects.
And, and that's, that's not part of this, David, and I don't want you to. But what, what I wanted clear was that, and you did answer my question, that the water meters were part of our capital improvement project, that this was still following in suit. And a good point was kind of brought up here. There was part of our presentation in the past that talked about the old water meters versus the new water meters. There was a savings because of water loss. Do you remember what that number was? I have an idea, but I don't want to be wrong by saying my number, if you, someone knows that. It's, I mean, it was like a million five. It was like 1.5 million in water loss that we have to our city due to the old meters. So, I mean, to me, these are way more important to get going now instead of incrementally over the next seven to 10 years. I think you had it for five, but I don't remember exactly what it was for the whole thing. However, the other projects are, you pay as you go, you save, you pay, and that's the portion, that's the reasoning for that. But that's not the purpose of this.
And, and again, our, our team from PG&E did, and Centrica did do that analysis on expected water savings that would be generated from, from replacement of, you know, old antiquated meters. And it, it's an aside, so I don't want to, again, go too, too far away from the topic at hand.
Please don't.
But we, we have received a notification from the state that the state is, is putting additional restrictions on cities in terms of that water loss. So this is one of the key mechanisms that has been identified on how we address that is the loss from meters. And so it, it goes, goes right at the heart of that issue. And I know that's an issue that, that has been brought up is, is how do we deal with that water loss?
And it's going beyond us at this point. As of yesterday, the, from, I believe it's, no, Santa Rosa to Marin County, they have like a $6 billion water loss in issue. They're, it's everywhere now. So they're finding and pushing hard. Okay, any other public comments?
All up to my comment?
You had about one minute left and I'll give you your minutes.
No, and this, as a ratepayer, it gets down to communication. So I would encourage, we've asked city representatives to provide us with an update. We went from pay as you grow, let's get the KIPS done for water and sewer, to we're going to do those, but we don't know when or how or how much is being spent, to now a lease arrangement for something else that a lot of the residents aren't aware of. So to me, I would encourage in communication to share this. If this helps us, great, because that's been one of the complaints, has been, we're not actually billing for lost water, we don't know where it's going. I mean, in fact, that's why you're doing this, I take it. But does this project take away from the critical infrastructure that the city has ignored for 10 years prior to this? And I wasn't here, I've only been here about five years now, but prior to this, we weren't doing capital improvement project for infrastructure.
So this is a, this is a standing item on the Public Works Subcommittee. I would really hope that you would go to those meetings and take part because that's where a lot of the meat and potatoes comes out. And could answer a lot of those. I appreciate you. Thank you.
And, and Mayor, just to the point of communication, we, we will, we, I've already prepared it, but we fully plan on a complete update on the AMI project in the Cloverdale Connect, December. We have an article that's going to come out in November. It's not going to touch, going to touch on, on another matter that's on your agenda this evening or was earlier on the consent. But we, we fully plan to publish an article that's going to cover in detail our, our water project activities.
Great, thank you. Any other public comments in the audience? Seeing none, do we have any hands in the audience on Zoom? Mayor, no one's raising their hand at this time. Public comments at 7:13. Back to the dais.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I may. First of all, I just want to thank Centrica and PG&E for being wonderful partners on us with, with, on this exhaustive project. This has been a subject of several public meetings, extensive meetings with staff. The documentation that's just in our, tonight's packet only touches on meeting after meeting and astute analysis of what on our CIP and the result of decades, not just 10 years, decades of deferred, deferred maintenance on water and sewer, the, where they've left this city. And the exhaustive studies and public input have been just an incredible accomplishment. And I want to, you know, I want to thank our partners at Centrica and PG&E for not leaving no stone unturned, no building untoured, no technology examined for its applicability with the result being a net savings to the city of $12 million. That is an astounding accomplishment. And I want to commend staff and our partners for, for bringing this opportunity to us. And then the item, of course, before us is the financing. And quite honestly, I was tickled when I read this because I couldn't believe we were getting that interest rate. So I also, just having gone through the, the staff report and the financial analysis was done, she's not here tonight, but I'm sure Suzie was a big part of pulling a lot of our numbers together and working with our consultants. But they did not leave any stone unturned and really looked at finding the best deal for this community. And I'm just, I want to express my, my gratitude and thanks. And honestly, it's, yeah, that was an amazing staff report and an amazing summary. And I just want to thank you for doing, working with our staff and doing a great job on bringing a great financing opportunity that will really improve the lives of our community. It's going to lower our water consumption, our water loss, our energy consumption. And the, the thing, the, the, one of the, the calculations that gets left out of a lot of our planning is that moving water costs electricity and that costs money. And the more water we waste, the more electricity we, we spend on water that doesn't end up in the hands of our ratepayers. So I think that this is, this is a great thing for the community of Cloverdale to hopefully get our infrastructure house, get it started in order. And I want to thank you for all your hard work. I look forward to seeing this project see completion. So I'm going to be, obviously, I think I'm going to be supporting this item tonight. And I'd be happy to make a motion unless someone else wants to jump in.
So to the Chair, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I just want to diddle what Councilmember Bagby said. We went through this several meetings now and the equipment that's being replaced, which the good part is it's going to be done all at once. We're going to realize the immediate savings and we're going to pay it back through savings. And so it's really not costing, in the scheme of things, a lot of money. We're saving money and it's going back into the, to pay down this equipment. In the long term, the city's going to be actually making profit. There'd be more money coming in, rates can go down accordingly when that happens. So the equipment that's being replaced is old, outdated. This isn't something that's nice to do. It needs to be done, otherwise we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for it down the road. Because what we've done is, as a city over the years, is kind of keep kicking the can down the road, and when it breaks, we panic and figure out how we're going to fix it. This is going to take a more proactive approach and make it happen immediately. So as you can see, I do support this as well.
I'd be to recommend the resolution by title only, resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving the PG&E investment grade audit, our IGA and sustainable solutions turnkey implementation project, work order for various energy and retrofit projects, following the terms of the PG&E major, is it supposed to be major service agreement? Is that a typo?
A ma- master.
Ma- master, what is it? It's master, oh, it's in T, thank you. PG&E master service agreement and authorizing the city managers to submit documentation and execute any associated agreements and applications to implement the project. You know, we don't get too many typos, that was a rarity, so.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Anyone? Attachment two? Nope. You did one, you did, you did the right one. Do you want it?
Happy to take it. A resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale approving the PG&E investment grade audit. Nope, this is the same one, unless it's the same typo.
Uh, the attachment five in the grant.
Oh, thank you, yeah, that's what I thought. There it is. Sorry, it's just down, down there. There we go. A resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale approving an equipment lease purchase agreement with the Bonk of America Public Capital Corp. or one of its affiliates and related documents and actions, including professional services agreement with W.J. Fall, Municipal Advisor, and Jones Hall Bond Counsel, and a placement agent agreement with Oppenheimer and Company, Inc.
I'll second that. Roll call when ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
I wonder, does anyone know what Mr. Giannini would think of Bonk of America? What would Mr. Giannini think of Bonk of America?
Mayor, members of the council.
The former greengrocer.
If, if I can, I just want to say, take the opportunity to thank our, our team that made it here tonight, Bill Fowle, Daniel Shaw, Rick, David Fama. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all the work you put into this and we'll, we'll be in touch.
Now the work begins. Thank you. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. 7:20. Ready, Michael? Okay, we'll reconvene at 7:27. The next item is H1, Seed to Soul Payment Plan for Local Cannabis Permitting Fees. At this point, Councilmember Cruz and myself will be recusing. Councilmember Cruz is recusing due to proximity of a neighbor and friendship with one of the persons involved. And I am because I was the contractor for the remodel of the building. And although it's not through Seed to Soul or Patrick King, I am still owed a debt. So I don't want it to get convoluted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, look, the records reflect that Councilmember Cruz is off Wi-Fi, and the mayor has removed himself from the dais. So the next item is, as the mayor has stated, it's a Seed to Soul Payment Plan for Local Cannabis Permitting Fees. And Kevin, I believe this is your item for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Patrick King, part owner of Seed to Soul cannabis business, to pay past due cannabis permitting fees. The current balance is $31,293, with another $6,257 due in January. We did discuss this item at the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee, recommending moving it to the full council for discussion. They also recommended including an interest rate, a low interest rate of two or, two to three percent. So if directed, we will prepare agreement with Mr. King establishing this, this plan. We've, the, the recommendation from the finance committee was $2,000 a month. Mr. King has asked for a reduction in that to $1,500 a month. We're, we're, if the council entertains this resolution, we're going to recommend $2,000 a month. We want to put some language in this agreement that if there's any late payments, if you decide to move forward, or, or any deviation from what's agreed to, that we're going to move immediately to revoke the cannabis permit, the local cannabis permit. That's pretty much it. There is a resolution for your consideration that would help us enter into an agreement, establishing a payment plan.
Vice Mayor, members of council, just a couple of additional things to consider, just in terms of background on this item. Just wanted to note, because you'll see the difference there in terms of the annual cannabis permit fees, is listed in the agenda report. Council did consider a change in the, in the annual permitting fees, and to explain a little bit about why there is a difference. And the, originally, the fees were set at the $12,518, because that was, that included the cost of performing a compliance audit. And that required the city to contract with out, with an outside firm. In this case, we contracted with HDL to perform the compliance audit, which included a, a financial audit of, of both Seed to Soul, but, but all, but the other cannabis companies. And what, what we determined, because it was a very extensive audit process, that we would move to an every other year audit, or, or as needed. And in doing so, we were able to reduce the fee in half, because we were reducing the costs associated with performing that additional work. Because we set the fee based on cost recovery. It's not, it's not a, you know, profit center by any means. It's really reflective of the cost to provide the inspections and, and the compliance for, for our cannabis industry. So I just wanted to kind of point out that background. Because part of the, the cost that the, in the request is reflected here, is costs that were borne by the city to perform the audit work. So I, I just think that's important information for council, as you consider whether to grant the request this evening.
Thank you, David. Also, at the subcommittee, and correct me if I'm wrong, we discussed that all other fees have to be kept current.
Correct.
And that would also constitute a default, if they're not.
Right, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, I'm bringing it back to the dais for any comments. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to address this item, please step up to the podium, state your name for the records, and share with us what you have to say.
As most of you know, my name is Jamie King, and I'm one of the owners of Red Door Remedies. And we are here this evening to ask.
Jamie, could you just wait one second? Michael, is that microphone on?
Oh, sorry. Is that better?
Thank, thank you.
Sorry. Let me start again. I'm Jamie King. I'm one of the owners of Red Door Remedies. And we are here this evening to ask that you not grant the request of Seed to Soul, to pay their licensing fees that are considerably past due, on a payment plan with what seems as a 2% loan from the city. The cannabis industry is one of the most regulated types of businesses in California, and we believe for good reason. Oversight is necessary, especially in the city located at the entrance of the Emerald Triangle, where weed has been a mainstay for some time. Cloverdale spent a considerable amount of time, effort, energy, and money to craft a cannabis ordinance that outlines how each type of business must perform in order to stay licensed and in good standing. Following those rules and regulations is what separates us from the illegal market and makes us a good partner with the city. We would ask that we not set a precedent for not following those rules and regulations and rewarding bad behavior. It's been three years with no attempt to pay, and the suggested monthly payment was $2,000. I guess there's now a request to lower that to $1,500. I did note that Kevin stated it would probably stay at $2,000. But if I do the math, that's a bit shy of two years or just over 20 months that they are asking to become current. In our opinion, courtesies like this should be extended to those businesses that are compliant and timely in their communication of hardship to the city. As David Kelly and Kevin Thompson are well aware, that is not the case here before you this evening. When multiple violations occur and keep occurring, it's a pretty good indication that perhaps they believe the rules and compliance do not apply to them. Perhaps it's time we enact a cannabis business roundtable that occurs annually or semi-annually, in order to bring to light any issues our local cannabis businesses are experiencing, so that those issues come to light in real time instead of years later. Perhaps it would also make the playing field fair, where we all have the same rules, and then we all have the same considerations when situations arise. We very much appreciate that this situation has been brought before the council, where we're all able to weigh in. And again, we ask for what is right and fair to the rest of us struggling to do the right thing, and are compliant and playing by the rules. We ask, please do not approve this request.
Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Sean, why don't you come on up? You had your hand up?
Hi, council. Good evening. Erin Gore, operator in town. I don't necessarily have an opinion on the fee structure, although I think it's really in bad faith to not have paid for three years. However, I do also like to ask that you do an environmental review. As an operator who works really hard to stay in compliance with local code enforcement, work with the building departments, have all my construction permitted, have all my safety for my employees, I just, it's just, you know, known there's issues going on down there, and it's known that it's environmentally not sound, and it's, you know, at a disadvantage when I compete against them on the shelf, price for price, product for product, that they're not held to the same standards that I am held to in the same town that I operate in. So food for thought, something to think about. And I appreciate you guys always being a good partner to the cannabis industry here in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean?
Member Walter, honorable members of the council staff, chief, thank you. Where to begin? Well, what a mess we've made. As you know, I too am a licensed cannabis operator. Have been involved since the beginning. Some things I can agree with. I think our fee schedules are a little expensive, comparison to the state, comparison to other municipalities. I'm excited to see that we're no longer contracting with HDL. I endured a couple of those audits. What a waste of money that was. I'll tell you, the, the Department of Cannabis Control does a far more thorough audit. And that doesn't come at a cost to us operators. That's just part of their service. So to continue with those audits, I think is, I wouldn't want to see that happen. In short, to probably get to all of my points in respect to our cannabis ordinance, um, I, I think I recall some conversation about, we'll revisit this in a year or so. It's been five. So I'd like to respectfully request that perhaps we can revisit it. I'd like to anticipate, too, that maybe things will go maybe a little more cordial. Maybe the civil discourse would improve. I don't have a lot to say about Mr. King's arrangement. I'd like to think that there was some conversation, consideration given to the, the change in fees. Asking a, an individual to pay for fees that are no longer current or accurate, it's a lot of money. I don't have a personal vendetta on which to exercise here tonight. I'd like to see the cannabis industry improve. I'd like to see it survive. I don't think the revocation of permits, which are already extremely difficult to acquire and maintain, shouldn't be given every consideration. And then again, I don't know that that hasn't been done. My colleagues in the cannabis industry tonight have had considerable comment in that respect, in criticizing and critiquing a, another cannabis operator. I'm not going to do that. Like you to just simply take into consideration all the facts, ask again respectfully, that our, our, our discourse in the future in respect to cannabis improves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else have public comment to talk about this item? Michael, is there anybody else out there in Zoom world?
It's like no one was raising their hand at this time, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Let me close public comment, bring it back to the dais. Councilmembers, any comments? Councilmember Bagby, would you like to go first?
Certainly. Yeah, I was very, very surprised to see this in our packet this evening, because this is not, there, there is, there's no mechanism in the ordinance, in the, in the code that we worked so hard on for this to be appealed to the council. This is an administrative license. This is not a dispensary license. This is, or this is granted administratively. So it's very strange and unusual that it would be brought before the council. I can understand why the mayor was hesitant to, to not put it on the agenda, because he has a conflict, and he had to recuse himself. So, so, so here it is. I'd like to go back in the discussion to measure P, voted on by, by the voters of Cloverdale. They were very clear that if we were going to have cannabis dispensaries and cannabis businesses in Cloverdale, they were going to be regulated, and they were going to be regulated well, and have to abide by the rules. There were, the, the ordinance on the books was, was a result of extensive public comment before I was even on council. And members of the public who came and said, we don't want any cannabis businesses in Cloverdale. Other members of the public came and said, we want to be business owners. And other people saying, we want to be customers. And other people saying, you know, I don't want to have to travel to Santa Rosa to buy epilepsy medicine for my kid, because cannabis is the only thing that works. But I think, the, the one thing that we all, all agreed on was that there was going to be a set of rules, and that we were going to follow them. No one wants to see a permit revoked. Nobody wants to see that. But the fact is, is that this permit holder has been behind for years now. And I, I have very little confidence in their ability to pay this back. We, we collect that permit fee, and then they, they make their goods, and they pay us an additional excise tax. When the bottom fell out of the industry, the, you know, cannabis, some of the cannabis operators in town said, this is what's going on in the industry. We need help. And the council listened, and we lowered the rates for all of the businesses. One, to help our local business owners, but also to kind of bring us kind of into alignment with other cities and other municipalities that we were a little higher than, because we were one of the first. So I thought that that, that was a very normal thing to do. And granting help to an industry is one thing. But extending a line of credit to another business that is required to make these payments in order to be in business is, is something completely different. So, you know, I, I can't support this tonight, because I think that it is in direct violation of the trust of the, the public put in us when they voted for measure P, and when they participated in those public meetings, that along with the cannabis business, cannabis business owners were participated, participated with us from the beginning. And it's, it's up to the elected officials to say, we're going to uphold the rule of law. This was, these were the conditions of operation. And we have, we can't betray the, the trust of the voters. So unfortunately, yeah, I, I can't support this this evening. And that, that's how I'm, that's how I'm going to vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Paula?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. I was not at the subcommittee meeting. I'm not on that subcommittee. I'd be interested to hear what the subcommittee had to say. It concerns me that three years of non-payment, and I would be interested, was there any communication or any agreement with the city within those three years to prolong this, to, to get to this point? It's not a few months delinquent, but three years is significant. And that's concerning, because I don't think the city should be subsidizing the business for three years. That the fees are in place for a reason. It's to cover their own costs, so the city general fund and city staff is paid through those fees to conduct those, whatever, audits, et cetera. So it does concern me. I, I'm leaning towards not supporting it, but I would like to hear from the subcommittee to see if there's something I'm not aware of. And I'd like to hear that. So I know, Vice Mayor Walter, you sit on that subcommittee, so maybe you could share some light to that.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Paula. Actually, I chair that subcommittee, and Mayor Lance is on that committee with me. He recused himself from that portion of the subcommittee. And when it was presented, it was viewed by me as a debt being owed to the city, and how we were going to be repaid. And the business owner came forward and laid out a proposition. I was looking at it to recoup the debt. I didn't feel that one council member, myself, should make one council member, myself, should make that decision. And that's why it came back to the city council. Like I said, Mayor Lance had recused himself, and it was my recommendation that we have more than one individual weighing on it. But I'm viewing this simply as working with a business who's fallen behind. I'm not looking at the nature of the business. I'm just looking at it as a debt owed to the city. I don't know what our alternatives, alternatives are to recoup this loss, but I recommended it and I'd probably support it this evening with the caveat, any delinquency, any non-payment of current fees, and it's automatically done. So that's how I basically feel.
Well, thank you for that. You know, I could support this, especially with any non-payment. It's an immediate revol of license. But I really think we need to take a look at the rules because I really don't think it should go three years. It should be two months. We should be talking about non-payment of fees or whenever they're due because it's just gone too long. So I agree, the city should try to recoup their funding, and we need to make it clear there's rules on that, so.
Councilmember Bagby, anything else?
I really, you know, can't speak to, you know, maybe the staff can enlighten us on, you know, what the process was. But, you know, we have to keep in mind that this is actually, there is no mechanism that sends an appeal to the council. It's actually kind of, I believe it's improper for us to be able to be considering it. It should be handled by staff. And if we need to go back and look at our language around this and our, the triggering mechanisms, you know, that's fine. But, you know, maybe staff can kind of give us some additional history of, you know, how long this has taken, what the conversations were, what the nature of that, what the nature of them were. Because honestly, from my point of view, the city took on risk when we set these permit fees up the way that we did because it was an emerging industry. And sometimes you have losses. You know, I hesitate also, I'm very hesitant, I'm, I'm, I think what this is essentially doing is extending a line of credit to a local business that's not being extended to our other cannabis business, let alone our other businesses. It's a very poor precedent, financial precedent for this council to set. So, you know, perhaps we could get some of the history of what's been going on with this permit fee and how much outreach was done by the city, what were the communications? Maybe you can explain why it's been in arrears for three years.
Well, I'll do my best.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Kevin?
Yes, I'll do my best. And, you know, if there's any blame here, maybe some on me, but we've been sending letters to Mr. King for first letter, second letter, third letter. He did indicate to me that he wasn't getting his mail. And, you know, it's on me for this getting as far as it has. Once I finally got in touch with him and let him know how much it was and understood the seriousness of this, we gave him a certain, we gave him like 30 days to pay, and he requested a payment plan to be considered by the council. We have done payment plans in the past on other things like code enforcement, and maybe this is a little bit different. I personally was the one who brought this forward, given the way that he was requesting it, and understanding that this is a burgeoning industry that's going through a lot of rough patches. And I know the council supports the industry. And so that's really where my decision to bring this forward as his request to the subcommittee.
Thank you, Kevin. And you're right. In the past, we have made credit accommodations available for businesses that had owed the city some money. Well, you know, I mean, we can sit here and debate this all night long, but there's a resolution on the table. If somebody would like to offer it, and if there's no second, then it just doesn't materialize. Jose?
Real quick, Vice Mayor. So because it is a resolution, just reminding the council, it does require three votes of the council in order to pass a resolution. So in this case, there are only three voting members, so it needed to be unanimous. As far as the, just, I think it's clear, the staff report, it's talking about the permit fees, not the taxes. It's my understanding that the taxes are up to date. And this is more, this is the permit fees. The municipal code does have sections regarding the city's ability, the option of, the city may, actually, there's a section on point, any permit issued under this chapter or commercial cannabis uses may be immediately suspended for any of the reasons listed. And it's below in that section, any permit issued under this chapter may be revoked by the city following a notice and opportunity for the hearing, for a hearing upon any of the following. And one of them is, the operator, permit holder, business is not current on city taxes or fees. So it is a requirement in the code that is, you know, does say may. So there's some flexibility there, but the language is clear as far as the intent of all fees and taxes being current.
All right. Well, thank you, Jose. So once again, council members, there's a resolution. Would anybody like to make that?
Could I get a clarification?
Oh, yes.
Question answered first from staff or from our city attorney. If the resolution fails, what's the recourse? What happens next?
Well, as far as the, if it fails, you do have a permit holder that is not up to date with the fees owed to the city. Pursuant to the ordinance, the city would contact the permit holder. And many times, and I don't know what the internal policy is, but you would give somebody X amount of days to pay. And that gets usually a shorter period of time. I think Kevin mentioned he did that. And if payment is not made, then the code allows for staff. And again, this is a permit that was issued administratively, not by the council. But then it would provide staff or the city manager the ability to immediately suspend. And I would assume we would be working with the options and looking at the options, but potentially immediately suspend until the payment is made or go through revocation of a permit. But again, very different than a dispensary, where a dispensary permit's issued by the council and it needs to be done by the council. In this case, it'd be an administrative process.
Thank you. Okay. Would anybody like to offer the resolution by title only? And it's going to need three votes. Seeing no one, then we're going to, okay, all right. Then the, the item fails by lack of motion. Thank you. So that's basically it. So we'll inform Mr. King accordingly, staff. Thank you. Would you also give Councilmember Cruz a call and let her know we're back? Mr. Mayor, if you're in the building, we're done with the topic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Moving on to H2, discussion on RENA or RHNA transfer agreement MOU between the County of Sonoma and the City of Cloverdale.
Mayor, I'll take this one and I'll invite our city manager, community development director to jump in as needed. What's in the packet tonight is a memorandum of agreement between the County of Sonoma and the City of Cloverdale regarding a transfer of what's referred to as the regional housing needs allocation. Council may recall during a recent presentation by our housing element consultant, Forleef, there was an overview provided in regards to the RENA, in short, that was approved by the Association of Area Governments and the Metropolitan Transportation Commissioner, our MTC. And those, those RENA numbers totaled 278. There's provisions within the government code that provides for, enables the county when properties are annexed from the county to the city to claim a certain number of residential units within, within that area. And what's included in your packet is a, is a MOU that proposes to transfer a total of 57 units, of units that are planned within the annexation area that the staff generally references as the Bumgarner Project, as well as the Dry Creek Rancheria by Du Colly project, both of which include a pretty significant number of affordable housing units. As such, the county did approach us about the transfer of those units because they identified that those areas were areas, the areas that were annexed to the city were areas that they were counting on meeting some of their RENA allocation numbers. And it should be noted that the county, in staff's opinion, was burdened quite significantly with the number of RENA units that were approved by A-BAG. And I know they took actions to try to reduce those numbers. But the total for the county was 3,881 units, which for, you know, for discussion purposes is almost an entire city, the size of Cloverdale in terms of the number of units. That A-BAG was requesting that the Sonoma County meet within their sixth cycle of their housing element update. So what is put together was negotiated in response to their original request to transfer 150 units. So I think what's reflected in your packet is a result of conversations that also involved Supervisor Gore. And I want to note that Supervisor Gore was very helpful in working with the city and permit Sonoma reevaluating the original proposal to a number that I think is reasonable. It certainly does impact us in terms of some of the units that we anticipate to be constructed within, within these annexation areas would count towards the county. But likewise, I think it's, it's a workable solution because I think likewise, the council would not want to see units built, you know, immediately outside the city boundaries in a way that, you know, leads to sprawl and other impacts. So I think what you see in your packet is, in terms of an agreement, is workable. We'll note that, you know, as of today, the City of Cloverdale is the only city within Sonoma County that is partnering with Sonoma County on the transfer of units, if council should support this this evening. So it does reflect a good working relationship. And I think, again, the number that they're proposing, or that's proposed in the current MOU is reasonable. The, you know, the other thing that I want to point to is the letter in your packet from the PRMD Director, Tennis Wick, you know, indicating that the county would support providing affordable housing, you know, through the county's Fund for Housing to affordable housing projects or other projects within, within the city. So I thought that was also, again, an indication that they're willing to collaborate with us on this. But I think what's reflected in your packet is, works towards addressing the government code requirements for annexation of those areas. And again, is a workable solution for both the county and city. And if approved by council, this would be submitted to A-BAG to formally approve. There's a fairly strict timeline for A-BAG to approve this so that it can be incorporated into our respective housing elements. And we would anticipate revising and re-releasing our draft housing element to include the 57 units that are identified in the MOU included in your packet. And so that would be done in short order, just to ensure that we're trained to address the timelines as set by the state housing and community development for a release of our draft housing element and ultimately adoption, which is January 31st of 2023. With that said, Mayor, I turn it back to the council. Obviously, our community development director's been working diligently with Forleef on the housing element and can answer any, you know, specific questions about that.
Just a couple of quick points. Future annexations won't be subject to RENA transfers in the agreement. That's good. And then the other thing is, this is the last thing that we need to get cleared up before, as David mentioned, our housing element. So I've let the consultant know that we want to release the public draft tomorrow, provided this is approved tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz, would you like to go first?
Yeah. So it means that this is not going to be a situation in the future, according to the MOU, correct?
Correct, under this RENA.
Right, right. Because, I mean, I, we are the only jurisdiction collaborating in this manner. May I ask David more about that conversation? How come other jurisdictions did not want to work with the county?
I don't know, the, Councilmember Cruz, to your question as to why other jurisdictions are not working with the county on RENA transfer. I didn't get into the specifics when my conversations with Director Wick. He did indicate that there was, you know, challenging conversations with other, other cities in regards to a transfer of units. And, you know, I left it at that. And, you know, because what was ultimately revised based on our conversation, that seemed like it was a solution that council may be able to live with, that this is, this is what we brought forward.
Thank you. It's just surprising that it's only Cloverdale.
Kevin, did you, I'm sorry, Kevin had something to add.
Well, we, yeah, we may be the only jurisdiction annexing during this period. So they do have the ability to claim some of that land as where they were going to put housing. David and I went round and round, and I don't know who spoke to Supervisor Gore, but we really appreciate it. And I know David did a really good job. And I'm really surprised at how far this number came down. So.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
This, if I may, yeah, this came before the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee, and we made an immediate phone call afterwards to Supervisor Gore's office. Were able to speak with him and explain our point of view. I certainly can't speak for any of the other cities, but I just, with Healdsburg as an example, they have a huge RENA allocation. We, even though our RENA allocation, you know, just depending on how you want to look at it, it would have been huge if we didn't have two projects coming in. And it's, I think it's just a technical, it's kind of a technicality that the county even has a right to claim it because they never worked, they were never going to be in the county. They were always going to be annexed because they're contiguous properties. So anyway, we got, we got on the phone with Supervisor Gore, and his staff was very helpful. I know it must have been the tone of my voice. And I was able to kind of explain it in elected official ease. And I said, you know, and he started asking some questions. And I said, you know, you really need to talk to David, and he needs to wonk you through it. And I got to say, you know, we announced a new contract with our city manager earlier tonight, and this is one of the reasons why. No one wonks like David. And so we were able to explain to, he was able to explain to Supervisor Gore, and Supervisor Gore really went to bat for us. I mean, he, the major problem, you know, isn't necessarily the affordable units. It was the moderate units that the county was trying to push onto us. And we, I think David very effectively explained to the supervisor that those units, there is no money for moderate housing. And they were, they're not part of either of those projects. And so I would imagine that we were the only city that got a really nice letter from Tennis Wick. And I actually, I honestly think that this is really a win-win for us because we were able to partner with the county. We were able, and now they owe us, just quite frankly, now they owe us because we did cooperate with them. And we'd let them know that, but we can't be walked over, and they have to negotiate with us. So I think that So I think that David and Kevin did a great job. But I'll just kind of highlight points of this letter that I thought were hilarious when you read them. This is a letter from Tennis. I don't remember ever seeing a letter like this from him, but he might be in better mood because I know he's getting ready to retire. "With Chair Gore's leadership, I will work with our housing partners to maximize funding opportunities for the city. I appreciate your cooperation in bringing this item to the City Council at the next meeting, keeping us all on track to finish our housing elements according to the challenging state requirements." It's challenging for all of us, and the county especially has been put in a very difficult situation. I think that this was really the best outcome we could have asked for. And it was, you know, due to leadership on our staff's part saying, you know, this is doable for Cloverdale? This part is not doable, and it could actually hurt us in the longer term if we fail to meet those moderate numbers to qualify for grant funding in the future. So I think we actually negotiated a win-win. I just want to thank our city manager and community development director for all their work on this and our partnership with Supervisor Gore. Again, he just really went to bat for us, and it just shows that a lot of times it comes down to relationship building. And I think that this puts us on good footing in working with the county going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just not much more to say. Councilmember Bagby covered it quite thoroughly. I think it's very difficult for all the jurisdictions, and I certainly think we got a good deal here. I think it's fair. Supervisor Gore continuously steps up on our behalf on so many different issues, and this is just another one. I'm especially pleased to see that one sentence that Councilmember Bagby just read, that "They'll work with the housing partners to maximize funding opportunities," and that's critical. That is very critical. So I think this is a good outcome, and I certainly can support it. Thank you.
So, oh, can we move the item or there's public comments?
Yeah, we're not quite there yet. So I just want to talk about the first numbers that arena was presented from the county. They wanted to transfer us 50 moderate income units to be built on top of what our arena already was, and 37 above moderate income, or units. And those were the ones that were on top of what Bumgarner and the Budakale project would have allowed us. We would have been building approximately 95 more homes than what we have already been allotted. And at this point, we really don't have any moderate or above moderate income homes coming in, so it would have drowned us in the arena. I didn't quite have the political ease, as Councilmember Bagby called it. I had a two-word answer for Supervisor Gore's office. And it wasn't nice. And so I thank him so much for working with us and understanding where we're coming from. And when I saw this, I said, he actually could have done better for himself.
You know, I want to just highlight that. He had, you know, he was asking me, well, what does this mean? And so I explained to him as best I could, and then I finally said, you know, to really deeply understand it, you need to talk directly with David. And he really wanted to understand what the issue was so that he could go to bat for us. And I just think that that shows that his curiosity and his willingness to work for us and also, you know, to get walked through it by a former community development director. I mean, once you, I guess you are, once you are one, you're one forever. And to really want to understand it so that he could take it to Tennis and get this fixed for us. And that is such a, he's just such a breath of fresh air, considering kind of the representation that North County has had before. He really works to understand what the issue was and what can I do to help. And we really can't thank him enough. And, you know, and again, it sets us up for having a better relationship with the county that it's like, hey, if we can come up with some housing dollars for you, you're our partners. And that's invaluable. So, yeah, many thanks to Supervisor Gore, if anybody's listening or watching.
All right, we'll open up to public comment. Seeing no hands and nobody in our audience anymore, we'll bring it back to the dais.
Any kind of motion or anything?
I move to accept this by title. I move this item.
Options in the staff report says provide direction to staff.
So I would like, we'd like to have a motion to formally authorize the city manager to execute the MOU.
There you go, Marta. Just handed it to you.
Very good. Thank you, Jose. That's your job.
I'll second it.
Fabulous.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Landz?
Aye.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, finance, admin, and police. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss something? What did I miss?
City manager.
Skipped right over it. The computer went right past it.
Changed my mind, wasn't it?
Woo! We don't need that one, do we? Do we really need that item?
We can have done H2 without H3, so.
It's funny, it went right to "I" on my computer.
Oh, yeah.
All right, H3, approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a fourth amendment to at-will employment agreement between the City of Cloverdale and David Kelly for the position of city manager.
And Mayor, I'll go ahead and present this one. And this kind of also is kind of the second part of the news today, right, with the report out following the performance evaluation. And the performance evaluation was also part of a special meeting that the council had a couple of weeks ago. So the conclusion was today, Mayor, you reported out that the council was very, very pleased with the city manager's performance. The item today, this item amends the employment agreement for the city manager. The employment agreement is going to be, the amendment will be the fourth amendment, and will amend the agreement by extending the term to June 30th, 2026. And it will also update the salary section of the employment agreement where now it will go from step four to step five of the current city manager salary schedule. So that will be, it will be going up from step four, which was $170,994.60, to step five, which is $179,544.33. And that's going to be effective July 1st, 2022. So it is retroactive pursuant to the terms of his current agreement with the evaluation and the step increase having to be considered at that time. That's really all the amendment does, again, the increasing the salary and also extending the date. And also, the amendment will make clear that the city manager is subject to standard merit system performance evaluations, with salary can be evaluated once a year during the performance evaluation.
Thank you, Jose. Councilmember Bagby?
I'm happy to offer the resolution.
Let's wait and see if anybody has any comments.
I was going to throw it down.
Anyone want to make any further comments?
I just want to, I just want to say thank you, David.
I know we had a lot of conversations in closed session, and so I will just echo the vice mayor and say thank you. I won't get into the hour and a half of conversations that we had earlier, so.
And I'd like to say thank you as well.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
It's hard to believe that we hired David as the city manager. It was March 13th, 2018. A lot of things have happened since then. So I'm happy.
We'll open to the public. Seeing no hands, we'll bring it back.
Happy to offer the resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale approving a fourth amendment to the at-will employment agreement with David Kelly for the position of city manager.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Landz?
Aye.
Just can't, congratulations and thank you for your leadership. You are really appreciated by me, and I appreciate our professional relationship, what I hope is a friendship as well, and look forward to continuing working with you in the future.
Okay. Moving forward.
This time?
The Subcommittee reports. Finance, admin, and police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be meeting November the 7th.
Planning and sustainability. December 20th, it says on here.
Thank you.
Public works and facilities?
We'll be meeting on November 16th. At our last meeting, I'm happy to say that, what did we do? We did, we approved park signage. So we're going to get some new signs in our park. And one of them that I'm excited about is going to request that the users pick up after themselves. And so hopefully, we can have some clean parks.
Can I ask you guys, I have a question about that. Does that include the new sign that went up at Porterfield Creek? Is that the same one? Is that under the?
Well, Hector did put all that together.
Yeah.
But I'm just talking about the signs for the parks. Second Street Park.
Second Street Park. Okay, I just was wondering if the new Porterfield Creek sign was part of that.
Yes.
Oh, great. It looks fantastic. So it's everybody, you have a head chance.
Well, Hector gets the credit on that one.
Absolutely.
And then we also talked about the pickleball. I had the opportunity to be there on Saturday and say a few words. And I know everybody would like to know that Kevin and David took the pickleball like a duck takes the water. They were out there, they were the first ones on the court, flapping that pickleball. It was, I have some pictures, and I'm just going to hang on to them in case I need them at some point. So our next meeting, though, will be November 16th. And just one more thing, the restrooms in the plaza have been started, and it already looks good. So that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, let's see. Next is Joint City and School District. The next meeting is November 14th, and we've been working together on the Washington Street Project and all the sewer connections and property on the corner from Times Square. This is Community Advisory Group. Next meeting is November 8th. Council reports. Got yours in there.
Oh, I sent mine in a little bit late. I thought I had sent it, and I realized it was still in my outbox. So did we get that out today, Mike?
Can I refresh your iPads?
Oh, thanks. Sorry about that.
It's in here.
Yeah, great. And I did just send David a couple of the pictures that I took of, I think, is it Hector? Is it Miguel with him? I can't, I couldn't, yeah, it was Miguel, yeah. So I just sent those to David, and he can send those out to the group, so, yeah, of the new sign up at Porterfield. Basically, I don't think the cement had been poured, so hopefully. They had just gone it in the ground.
Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition?
Mayor, I do have a letter of support request from Smart. This is in regards to funding for bringing the Smart train north to Windsor. Council has authorized signature in the past for saying that Smart is continuing to seek additional funding to bring that project forward with council support. I'll forward it to you for approval.
Two weeks ago, we talked about supporting the letter demanding the resignation of the LA council members regarding their racist comments. That was put forth to them through the, yeah, through the MCA. They did it, and we joined in.
Mr. Mayor, I usually don't give a council report for some reason, but I did have the opportunity to tune in on Monday evening to Senator Maguire's Redwood Trail project. And it's really going to be an exciting project. The bugs still have to be worked out. Councilmember Bagby is sitting on the committee. Yeah, so she'll be carrying our messages forward, I'm sure. I'm just hoping that they have ADA compliant sections, and they allow electric bikes with charging stations. I don't think I could pedal all the way up to Humboldt, but with an electric, with an electric bike, I might be able to. So very beneficial. I signed up to be part of the emails, and you can, they have an interactive map. You could get there, and you know how Mike is. I mean, he was just all over the place. He was excited about it, and I'm looking forward to seeing that eventually make its way to Cloverdale. Thank you.
Yeah, I was able to, since I'm on the board for that and Smart, I thought it would be a good idea for me to go to the town hall. I think that they did a good job, but I noticed that, one, they kind of buried the lead, not necessarily, well, actually, the question was asked by one of the callers, hey, you know, what's the deal with the north part of the trail that Smart has and how it transitions to Great Redwood Trail? And the planning process that they talked about signing up for the emails and getting the email alerts and putting information, like, putting information in, and critiques about, hey, you know, how about electric bikes, and how about places where people can charge their electric bikes, and how about services? That's going to all be part of the outreach process and that Alta Consulting is doing. And even though it's really focused, it's funded for Mendocino North, they still want our input, they still, and ultimately, the pathway will be, hopefully, as compliant as possible. I mean, that's, you know, members of the Great Redwood Trail, I'm lucky, I have a member of Great Redwood Trail and Smart with me, Damon Connolly, were very interested in making sure that there's consistent signage, there's consistency in development. But one of the things that will be indicative of the trail that's just like other trails, other similar trails, is that there will be places that are, just like our river park is, wheelchair ADA, ADA, they'll be parking, they'll be, it'll be ADA compliant. There will be, in more wild areas, it might be, it'll be, it'll be like, you know, a trail. It'll be like a dirt trail, and it'll be different depending on what your experience is, whether you're in a city. And I think that it's important, if you can, to go to the city of Ukiah, go to Healdsburg, and take a look at the portions that those cities have put in of the GRT within their cities, and it kind of shows what the potential and the possibilities are. On last Saturday, I wasn't able to come to the pickleball opening because I was in Petaluma at a ribbon cutting for a section of the Smart Trail. And so let me get, getting back to, so I think that, to kind of answer some of the questions, is that we know trails like that are different kind of based on where you are. So in cities, they're going to be more bike, pedestrian, you know, it's going to be ways, as it is now, it's, kids are going to, using them to go to school. People are using them to take their cargo e-bikes to go grocery shopping. So that's how they get used in cities now. And that's why it's important that we are like, hey, we want this, we want this, we want this. We tell the consultants, and we get that in part of the plan. But one of the things that I think got kind of, because it's such a big project and it was so exciting, somebody did ask, hey, what's the deal with the northern part of the trail that Smart has, and how does that work with GRT? So the way that it was kind of settled, and I think it was because Smart needed time to do, to look at how much of the area north of the station do we need? And so Farhad, wanting to just say, hey, we own it, we pay for it, let's make sure our jurisdiction extends, he, you know, he made sure that it extended to, what, it's like a mile, I wish, I should know the mile post markers. I'm a bad, being a bad board member, I should know all the details. But it extends to the mile marker at the Sonoma Marin border. And so when we had that meeting of GRT, our incoming interim executive director, Carol Hart, who's our chair, and Smart people back, Smart Train people, also Smart, but there's a Smart Train people, when they were up doing the tour in March, kind of one of the ideas that was floated was that there would probably be, if Smart only needs to run trains... to run trains up to the station, there would probably then be an MOU with the Great Redwood Trail. That's not set in stone, that's not, but that, but that's just sort of the idea. So it's, it's actually, I don't think it's too early, considering that other cities have portions of the GRT done, paved, ready to go, people are using them. I think it's a good idea for, for Cloverdale to start talking about that, having those conversations with Smart because it is their jurisdiction and talk about what is that area, what's that area going to look like? How's it going to fit into our, you know, northern Sonoma County parks master plan? If I say it, it'll, maybe it'll be real someday. How will it fit into our circulation plan? We need to start talking about that and working with Smart staff. Because it's actually, I mean, that whole area between First and even the, the South Cloverdale Boulevard exit, it's a de facto bike route. It's a de facto, I mean, you, you know, I, I use it to go to the south end of town because I, I feel, actually, I feel safer on Asti Road with the big shoulder than I do sometimes driving through town. I drive and then I take, now that those stop signs were put in at the South Cloverdale Boulevard, I actually feel safer going, if I'm going to go to grocery outlet or if I'm going to go to the south end of town. So I don't think it's premature considering that other cities have already built their Greatwood Trail sections out for us to start having those conversations with Smart and kind of creating a, I don't know, a master plan for, for that area. Because it's, it's just, it's never too soon. So, but I, I think that that wasn't, it was asked in the meeting and it really wasn't answered adequately. So hopefully that kind of gives you a better idea of, of where Smart and Great Redwood Trail are going. And already they're, you know, Karen has only hired two people at Great Redwood Trail. So the ability to, for Great Redwood Trail and Smart to work together is kind of limited until you hire your staff out. But already they're, you know, Karen and Eddie are, are hooked up and talking to each other and their, their planners are talking to each other. And fortunately, you know, we know one of the planners at Great Redwood Trail well. It's Louisa who was working with us from Ag and Open Space. So, you know, so it's somebody that already knows Cloverdale, you know, and is, is really plugged in and has a good working relationship with, with our staff. So, yeah, I just, I, I think that especially after that meeting, it was pretty evident that it's, it's not too soon for us to start talking about how we can partner with those agencies.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's coming up. Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully everybody can make the, the chamber breakfast on November 4th. That would be a great thing to, great thing for all of us to be able to make it.
David, any city manager reports?
Just a, a brief update, thank you. Councilmember Bagby for the note on the, the chambers breakfast on November 4th. You know, the city will, will cover the expense of the attendance for the breakfast. Wanted to report that I, I'm going to take a day off tomorrow, so I'll be out of the office. And if anything comes up though, call Kevin. My, my wife's doing jumping jacks at home right now. No other reports, Mayor.
City attorney reports?
Just real quick, and I know probably the council already heard, the, as far as the governor's declaration of the emergency for COVID, for the pandemic, lifting it in February. So just it'll, it'll morph as far as I'm sure the regulations. But what that does mean is AB 361 no longer would be able to, to be in, in place after February. So obviously staff in my office will continue to talk and provide updates to the council about what does that mean going forward for the participation by council on Zoom. There was a new legislation, I think I briefly mentioned it, that has a lot of, a lot of different requirements if a council member wants to participate by Zoom or phone or whatnot without, without posting where they're calling from. The previous rules on, on posting where you're from and, you know, I'm sure that most council members at least once have done it or, or on boards, those are still in place, but it just will change the landscape a little bit. But now that you have Zoom for the public and whatnot, I know that Dave and I will also be talking about kind of what the rules mean and then we'll bring it to the council, of course, to keep exploring.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a legislative update on housing, new housing rules or, you know, any, okay. So is that on the, when's that planned for?
We, well, well, I know there's a, there's a lot of legislation happening, ADUs and also unaffordable housing. We're working on providing a, and a lot of the stuffs, a lot of legislations in effect January 1st. So we'll be emailing the council just an update on everything and of course, working with, with Kevin. I know potentially our ADU ordinance, for example, will have to get updated with some of the, some of the new tweaks.
David, any update to the water?
Just, just real, real brief, the, there continues to be a, a reduction in the inter-basin diversion from the Potter Valley project under the variance that was granted by FERC to PG&E. So we're continuing to see reduced inflows into Lake Sonoma, though come, under the variance, we're going to see a slight increase from 5 CFS to 10 CFS. And that is until such time that Potter Valley reservoir reaches, or Lake Pillsbury, excuse me, reaches a, a level of 36,000 acre feet of storage. And that, that hasn't been met yet. Not sure if it will, but that, you know, we just continue to see reduced inflows into, into Lake, Lake Mendocino. As of just late last week, we, Lake, Lake Mendocino nonetheless was in fairly good condition, we're about 65% of our target water storage curve for this time of year. There is some, some precipitation forecasted in November, so fingers crossed we'll get, we'll get some good rain events and that'll help, help with our drought conditions. So looking forward to maybe getting a little rain and helping us with our, our reservoir levels. But we're still, we're still in better shape this year than we were last year at, at the same time.
Thank you, David. We already heard COVID-19 updates, so council direction on future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just want to make sure that people remember that the DEA national takeback is this Saturday, that is to turn in unwanted medication, vape pens, e-cigarettes for safe disposal, and that is to be at the police department. I would like to ask the chief if there's a particular signage that is going to be available for people to have the correct direction on, on where to place or, or what to do.
I think Teresa has that in play. I'll double check just to make sure we have signage already for the doors, I believe, but we'll make sure. It's, it's something people are used to here. We're happy to do it again.
Thank you very much, Chief, for agreeing to do this. I know that it was a little uncertain some time ago, but it looks like if it's established and I, I hope it doesn't become a burden on the police department.
No, we're used to it. We're happy to do it.
Thank you again.
Right, with nothing else, meeting adjourned at 8:34. Thank you all.
Recording stopped.